Recognize these two great losses. So will you stand please?
Our most gracious in heaven with father, we thank you for the opportunity to come here and be of service to this community. Lord, we thank you for such a beautiful day outside. We ask that you keep us safe, protect us, and help us do what is the will of this community. We thank you for such a great country and county that we live in. We also ask that you protect those that are in harm's way defending our freedoms and rights. It is in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I would make mention from the beginning of the meeting that I will be recessing the meeting at ten minutes to four. Because at four o'clock, we're going to assemble in the entryway of our building here for the presentation of the plaque in remembrance of our centennial. So just so that you'll be aware of that. Recognize Mark Clark for the presentation of the Employee of the Month.
Chairman Brown, Commissioners, Mr. George Foyle, Commissioner. This time, the Employee Selection Committee asks that Kimberly Kruger step forward. The Employee of the Month Selection Committee has selected Corporal Kimberly Kruger of the Lee County Sheriff's Department as the Lee County's Employee of the Month for March of 2008. Corporal Kruger has been employed with Lee County since July 23rd, 2003, and currently serves as a jailer. Corporal Kruger has earned the reputation as an individual who gives 110% to her duties as a jailer. She adapts well to the many situations that occur at the jail, many of which are dangerous and lead to a stressful environment. Corporal Kruger not only handles her own stress in a professional manner, but is always available to help coworkers deal with on-the-job stress. As stated in her nominations, and I quote, "Kim's quiet sense of humor lessens tension in our workplace. Her loyalty to her coworkers and perseverance on the job encourages restlessness." Corporal Kruger supervises inmates in an even-handed, courteous manner which garners respect from both the jail population and fellow officers. She also deals with inmates' families, attorneys, court personnel, and the general public in a courteous and professional manner. All in all, her actions cast positive reflections on Lee County, the Sheriff's Office, and the jail, end quote. Corporal Kruger and her husband Stuart have five children. In addition to her careful duties and caring for a large family, Corporal Kruger is studying for her associate's degree. The committee felt that based on the recommendation of Corporal Kruger's dedication and loyal service to Lee County, she should be awarded Employee of the Month. Therefore, the committee respectfully asks that you join us in awarding Corporal Kruger Employee of the Month for March 2008 in recognition of her dedication to the safety and welfare of Lee County and its citizens.
First of all, we have a plaque for you. Employee of the Month, March 2008, Lee County Government recognizes Kimberly Kruger for going above and beyond regular duties to be an outstanding employer. Signed by the County Manager, John Crumpton, and by the Chair, Robert S. Frank. Congratulations. I also have a star award for you that will be a remembrance in this occasion.
Thank you.
And a day off we pay.
Okay.
All right. And also a gift certificate from Papa John's.
Thank you.
A gift certificate from Moon the Gallery. And a gift certificate for Coca-Cola. So you can owe your day off.
Okay.
I would make mention that Commissioner Reeves is not present at this particular time, but hopefully he will be here before the meeting is over. He experienced a little bit of car trouble, I understand, in Raleigh. Now to introduce our new employees, Mr. Crumpton.
Captain Everett is here to introduce an employee, Sheriff of Jail.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Honorable Chairman, members of the board, I would like to introduce to you Ms. Helen Heath. She's our new jailer, new employee. Ms. Heath comes by way of New Hanover County. She has 10 years of law enforcement experience. She is dual-trained. She has a certification as a deputy as well as a jailer. She's originally from Hornet County. She has two adult children and five grandchildren, and we would like to welcome her aboard.
I present you with the county team. Thank you very much. Welcome.
In White Lake County.
Thank you. Mike Haynes has a new employee.
Good afternoon, Chairman, and members of the board. I would like to introduce to you Rita Rose. And Rita is a foreign language interpreter in the Public Health Department in our clinical section. And Rita is from Yavapah County, Arizona, where she for five years worked in the county health center, community health center? They know. And she was a bilingual medical receptionist there. So we're fortunate to have her with us.
Molly McInnis, the Register of the Deeds, has a new employee.
Chairman, if I may, I would like to introduce Mrs. Renee Frye. She will be, once she's trained in all she's been sworn into her deputy in the Restor Lees office. And she comes to us as, she was a teacher's assistant in local county schools, and she's has a two-year associate degree and applied science from CCCC.
Brenna Potts is next.
Chairman Brown, members of the board. I have four down to two. One that's out sick and one that's in training today. But this is Crystal Hazelton. Crystal's our newest social worker. She's an investigator in Children's Protective Services. She has a bachelor's social work from USCG, and she and her family just came back from England. So she's just joining us. This is Ray Tobin. Ray is also an investigator in Children's Protective Services. He has, I think, a master's in education, but he has 19 years of social services experience, 16 of those was in New York and three is in North Carolina. Staff, this is members of your board.
Dwayne Brunson has a new employee.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'd like to introduce Matt Sparrow. He's still in the position of real property appraiser with us. Comes to us from Pitt County, where he was also a real estate appraiser, working towards an associate's in business administration right now. Let's finish that soon. And he also has four years of military service.
That is it, sir.
Have any additional items that could be added to the agenda? Either the consent agenda or the regular agenda? Are there any questions about the consent agenda? If there are none, then I will...
I put out a copy of the trust that goes with the promissory note that was in your agenda from the airport authority as the security board.
That's right. We've already approved that, so...
Every day of sentence, because we had to bring him back and then give him rest and ready for the work of the commission.
I'm glad you have that.
I thought you'll be gone.
Your motion had the agendas be approved as granted with that additional item. So move. Although the favors say aye, the opposed say no. It's so ordered. Do I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
If I move, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? Although the favors say aye, the opposed say no. Motion is unanimous. Coming now to our public comment part of our meeting, and I will recognize Richard Hayes. And I would make mention that you have three minutes of Mr. Hall as our timekeeper in this talk, what?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I want to express to you my thanks for your recent unanimous decision to place before the voters of Lee County on May 6th the opportunity to vote for and hopefully pass a 1/4 cent local option sales tax. This will hopefully lead to a well-planned, early start in the long-awaited Phase 1 capital improvement renovation and construction of Lee County High School. As a result of your favorable action, I believe it is fair to say that everyone went away from the hearings you conducted satisfied that matters were well in hand and that all had been done that could be done to move forward. Your intentions were clearly stated publicly. Some might say that in February, bold, confident leadership was exhibited by you to work with the Board of Education, if the referendum passes, to begin within a year Phase 1 reconstruction of our flawed, rapidly deteriorating oldest senior high school, which over 55 years ago began as the hope and pride of Lee County. Today, I ask you respectfully to reflect one more time on this question. Is there anything more that you can do between now and May 6th to reassure the voters of Lee County that the high school is at the top of your priority list, followed, of course, by other deserving improvements, including the community college? I ask this because, in my opinion, it would be unfortunate and totally unacceptable if the referendum failed. That must not be allowed to happen. I believe, and I am sure that you agree, that the growth and prosperity of our county for decades to come may depend on how you manage financing capital improvements of public education in Lee County beginning this year. Thank you for your due diligence.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. I recognize Ms. Heath Clark.
My apologies to Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, my apologies to Commissioner Kelly for not wearing any green. Obviously, I wasn't thinking ahead. I would like to follow up on what the last gentleman said about what more you might could do to ensure passage of this referendum. I looked at your brochure, and I find it to be correct, factually accurate, but there are places where it could have gone, could have been stronger. For example, can a county stipulate uses of the monies on the ballot as part of the referendum? No, you can't. Can you stipulate at other places? Yes, you can. Some other counties have even adopted budget amendments contingent upon the passage of the referendum, so that the voters know exactly what they're going to get. Now, another thing that I would suggest that people who are considering this referendum do is ask for and receive, under the public information laws, a copy of your capital improvements program, so that they can see all the needs that you have for capital improvements and the tough choices you can face. Now, I will tell you, however, that those I've discussed with find it a little unusual that our priority for replacing office staff or this commission, for the staff or the county manager and the senior department heads, we don't think they, a lot of people wonder if they need a building. I also read this about one facility. Current space is very limited, and there are safety issues. The facility needs to be renovated. Funds reserved for this project would be better spent on another facility that would provide better access and a longer life for the facility. Sounds like Lee County Senior High School, doesn't it? Instead, it's your county manager's number-one priority in a meeting for, a building for environmental health and community development. I would suggest to you that you make a summary of this document available to the public, along with this document of the public, so that they can know what you're really planning to do with your money. Thank you very much.
Mr. Crumpton, do you want to handlay an introduction?
Yes, sir. We have Don Kabasik here to discuss the growth patterns in the county. This was an item that was on several commissioners' response to the, what we want to discuss at a retreat. So since we didn't have a retreat, I had Don here today to discuss this growth trend, and I have seen this report, and it's pretty enlightening, so...
Well, I've got 15 or 20 minutes, so we'll get going as fast as we can. Lee County Strategic Services, we estimate and project numbers throughout the year. We project them on, and give you a quick overview of how we come around with the numbers that we have. Since 2000, we have added over 4,100 new residential units to the county. The 75% of them are below or south of 421 in this area right here. It's cyclical, the growth, we go anywhere from 600 residential units down to 400, up to 600, down to 400, 500, down to 400. But we are certainly in the downturn now. Last year, we had right at 500, and so far, we've had 360 this year. So with the housing crunch, we are down a bit, even though we shouldn't be in that upturn, Mr. ...
How often do you year or fiscal?
For the units that we're talking about is fiscal year. So it's June or July 1st or June 30th.
Is this track land, or is this homes on the ground, or...
This is homes on the ground. And what we're going to look at real close is, if we look right here, this is Carolina Trace. We're just going to take a quick look at Carolina Trace. Right now, there are 2,500 residential lots in Carolina Trace. In 2000, 1,100 of those lots had homes on them. In 2000, at the end of 2007, 1,463. So we've added 350-plus residential units in Carolina Trace, but we're still just a little over 55, 57% built out. So we still have 1,000 units right here. What we're looking at, it looks like there's nothing, no room at all here. So currently, we have 24,500 residential units. We saw that we have over 1,000 lots right here that we can build on. We have thousands in West Sanford and around the county, another thousand. So we have plenty, plenty of space to grow. In addition to that, we have three subdivisions that are at large that have been approved to come in. We've got 300 units at Westfall, another 1,400 units in Barrington Place, and then 2,800 units up in Deep River Forest. Just in these three subdivisions alone, we have as many new residential lots as we have added since 2000. So with where we are at, located in the state, we don't have to worry about our water. We're just south of the Research Triangle. We have an excellent sewer capacity. So you hear people talking about, well, growth is coming, growth is coming. Well, growth is here. We have grown just residential units since 2000, over 20%. So we have people coming in. And so what do these, since we use residential units as our basis for population, let's take a look at what these numbers mean. We look at from 1970 to 1990, it showed that the county grew by 11,000. And from 2000 to 2006, worth the Fed has estimated, and the Fed estimates on a fiscal year, and the last that we have for them is 2006. Even the Fed is showing us that we are growing 8,000 in just a short time since the last 2,000 census. Now, Strategic Services, we are above that. You can see that we're a couple thousand above in 2000. We're still a couple thousand plus above here in 2006. And right now, we're on course to get to 61,800. Right at the turn of the, of the new year, we're right at 61,000. But the difference between these two, as we go down, is the residential units that the census uses to figure out what the population is. They use kind of the same formula that we do, but their base that they had during the decennial census was about 1,200 residential units less than what we are showing. And we know that by working with their LUCA program, the Local Update Census Address Program, that we take their census rolls, we scrub it, and we look over it with our data. And the first time we did that back in 2004, when we did that challenge, we were 1,200 residential units apart. Right now, we just finished it up, it was right at the end of 2007, and we were only 700 residential units apart. So hopefully, by the time the next decennial census comes around, we're much closer, because we want that count in 2010 to be as accurate as possible. So let's take a look, then, at our Hispanic population. We get asked here at your meetings about Hispanic population, so we went ahead and put that in. In 1990, we were at just under 2% Hispanic. The federal census in 2000 showed us at 11.7, and we used the school enrollment method to project the Hispanic population. We use what the feds were showing our Hispanic population to be in 2000, along with total population, versus what the school population is and their percentage, and we use some formulas together to come up with these right here. So we're looking at, right now, between 20 and 22% Hispanic for the county. And again, that's using the school enrollment method. And actually, we're probably on the low side. Faith Action out of Greensboro does a study, and they were showing in 2003 for Lee County, they were at 17.7, and in 2005, they were at 20.3. So again, this is, projecting is not an exact science, so we're saying we're 20-plus percent. So these population figures, what do they mean to one of our big users of our funds, is our school system? And our school system capacity is what moves the brick and mortar, it's not the number of students. Because right now, we have a capacity of 10,300 in our schools, and it includes, this is going to be a little bit different from what you have in your package. We were given some revised figures last week, so we added 120 to Southern Lee High School.
Who had your figures?
Dr. McCormick, Superintendent of Lee County. We're showing that least, Southern Lee was 1,200, and they've redone their calculations, and they're showing that at 1,320. But this high school number here includes that, again, it's going to be a little bit different in the years, and also includes 400 for Lee Early College. So we have 9,500 kids in our school system, so if we look at it this way, we've got 800 capacity for our schools, but that necessarily is not the case. If we look at our elementary schools right now, you can see that we're over capacity by 260. We have 14 mobile units at our elementary schools right now. We have 14 mobile units at our elementary schools right now, that's 18 to 19 children per unit, which comes up to your 260. Middle school, it shows that we're not over, but we've added Sandley Middle School in here, being as it, for all purposes, is built. They will be in there next year. And if they were in there right now, we'd still have a capacity of about 400. Now, if we look at the high schools, then, this 560 includes, the extra that we added in is not in your package, it includes the 400 for Lee Early College. And I'll make a statement about Lee Early College, is that had a five-year funding cycle. And, Mr. Grumman, are we in second year or third year? Third year. So, if that funding is not renewed, then these numbers, this number will change here. Let's take a look, then, at five years down the line. Now, we project using the last five years' growth rate for the schools coming in. We don't do it by just, this is what elementary schools, or middle schools, or high schools are growing. We do it by grade. So, if kindergarten to first grade grows by 2.6%, well, we use a five-year average on that, but also, we've added the BRAC numbers in. And BRAC has said that, between now and 2013, that there will be an additional 460 students. Well, with our projections, we came up with 430 additional students above what our normal growth rate is. So, we're close, but these next five years, these projections include the BRAC numbers. So, in five years, with just the brick and mortar that we have right now, our elementary schools will be about 900 over capacity. Our middle schools will be right at capacity in five years. And our high schools will be, will have a capacity of 166. Again, if we don't have Lee Early College, that will change. But we're looking at what is in the ground right now. Let's go a little bit farther, 10 years down the line. Now, 10 years, we take out the BRAC numbers. We no longer have that 61% above normal growth rate. We go back to normal growth. And we're looking at elementary schools, we are 1,200 over capacity. Our middle schools, we are certainly over capacity. And our high schools, we're over capacity. So, just with the growth that we have right now, with the growth trend that we are experiencing, these are the numbers that we are looking at from Strategic Services on down the line.
At any point, do you include in your calculation the graduation rate and the dropout rate for any?
We do not. What we use is the trend from one year to the next. If ninth grade grows by 2% or ninth grade is a negative 2%, we go by grade, but we don't take it. I guess we do take into account dropout rates, because you're looking at, if they drop out, they're not included in those, in that percentage of growth or...
I would hope so.
Yes, sir?
I know from my time on the Board of Education, the State Board of Education is looking closely at the charter schools. Have you taken into account if the fact that maybe Viges's Academy may not be recertified, what that would do?
No, we didn't. We used the three high schools that we have right now, the Southern Lee, Lee Senior, and Lee Early College. We've not taken into account that, Mr. ...
Don, do you have any statistics on the number of students that are in the five of schools?
That is one thing that we do not have.
Other than the Lee Early College, do you see, foresee any effect that could affect these figures to growth rate?
If we have additional growth above our normal growth, it will certainly affect these numbers. And we will change these numbers next year. When we look at five years down the line, they will be different. Again, the farther out you project, the less accurate they are. But again, we're using just normal growth trends here, the last five years, to project these numbers.
Can you go back to subdivision, you had two subdivisions up earlier. And what kind of timeline are these subdivisions on, or do you know?
If we started breaking ground right now, Mr. Grumman, well, we're looking at, it's still going to be years down the line before they are completely built out.
Right.
We're just looking at, at the number of new residential lots that would be available.
Okay. So, you really haven't addressed any numbers for these three subdivisions?
That is correct, because that would be speculating. We try not to speculate when it comes to this. This is a normal growth rate. If Deep River Forest starts going in, and Westfall, is it going to deter other growth? It may do that. So, we're looking at just our growth trends that we are experiencing right now. We put this in to let you know that things could change dramatically here in the next five years or so.
Have you done any demographics or psychographics on the actual person, the average person that's moving here?
We have, but I do not have that data right here with me. We can get that to you.
Yeah, I might see that. So, we know what these people?
Median age, sex, race, what their incomes are, those type of things, yes, we have. We have those available.
And do you have it in a breakdown of what that 20% that you talked about earlier has grown among that timeline?
I'm not sure if we can find that, but we will certainly look into that. Probably do a comparison from what we have to what we have in there.
I know you do a lot with larger developers, such as like going on in Deep River Forest. What about someone that owns land that plans to put in, you know, like a small development or something like that? Is that taken into account, say, like if I had, you know, a tract of land and wanted to break it out, you know, for a small subdivision or something like that, just selling empty lots?
That is, that's the normal growth rate that we are...
Okay.
Do you have any questions for me?
To me, this speaks of when we're considering Lee County schools, we really need to be looking at capacity. I mean, that's what smacks to me, right, from this presentation? Capacity at all levels.
Well, it addresses capacity, but it also, it should cause us to take a serious look at condition of existing schools. Because the capacity is just one part of it. If they're run down over the next few years, capacity won't have the same effect. I mean, the condition of the building has the same effect as the capacity, but you have to do something to improve it, and there'll be costs associated with that. So, technically, if you're looking at elementary schools, I mean, it's pretty clear, by these numbers, in five years, you're going to have to do, you need to do something almost now, and certainly in five years, you'll have to do something.
Does anybody remember, John, you might notice, when the elementary schools were built, weren't they built so that a wing could be added on to every single one of them?
Same as Southern Lee is built everywhere. I think it's an additional 10 classrooms or 200 people, 200 stood capacity as well. But yet, the elementary schools are building, at least the west is supposed to be the same way.
So, east and west also?
Don, these multi-units, is this capacity, or does it take into, what is our occupancy rate? Do you have access to that?
Yes. In the city, our occupancy rate is 92.65609, and in the county, it's 92.175202. Our occupants per household inside the city is 2.75, and in the county is 2.65.
I couldn't tell by this screen that you had a lot of the dots on it. Was that, do you have an idea of where all the growth is happening?
Sure.
I know you talked, you addressed Carolina Trace.
Right, but we're looking at the majority of our growth, 75% of everything happens south of 421, down in this area. Actually, you can kind of see that that's where all the dots are, and up here, you don't have near as many. So, that's 75%. Even all new growth is down in this area.
What is that upper corner?
This?
Northeast?
Up here? This is Deep River Road right here.
Yeah, back.
This?
Where there's more clear...
Oh, this right here?
Yeah, yeah.
That's just a huge tract of land. It used to be warehouseer land that...
It's behind my house, Robert.
It is owned by an individual up in Caryor, Raleigh.
Yeah, that's it.
He's an owner too on the deep. Just kidding.
So, go on, Little Channel, wild, I agree.
That is correct. We're looking at, this is Hardak County, Moore County, Channel County.
Do your stats take into consideration the land conservancy that's being?
Yes, we actually, very recently, there's been a few hundred acres right here that have been bought on the Deep River. You've got your indoor iron works that's part of that. You have some other land here, and you have some game land that's right in here. So, those places will never be developed.
Do you have a color-coded map that we might look at, or get from, or somebody could?
Yes, actually, on our website, you can download our open space and recreation...
Do you have a map?
I said, can you have a format, and you can see where all those are. We'll get you a map.
So, Don, I understand you're right that in the city, the average occupants per dwelling is 2.75?
Yes, that is...
And in the county, 2.65?
2.65, yes. So, you have fewer per household in the county than you do in the city.
They're looking at the right percentage of county. Because when I was campaigning for this, I came across three houses in a short block where there were three families living in each one, and about four kids per family. Do they get counted anywhere?
During the census, they will be counted. If they...
If somebody answers the door.
If they answer the door, or send back the form. The census, they can go to a house, and there might be multiple vehicles in the driveway, toys out in the yard, but if somebody does not send back their questionnaire, or answer the door to answer a census taker, that will be counted as zero. It will not be counted.
Do they have the census form in Spanish? I thought I was hitting a bonanza.
They will have...
Boy, three different sets of voters here. None of them spoke any English, so I was...
They will have the census form in Spanish. And actually, it'll probably be next month that in the census dress rehearsal, we should start receiving some data, some questionnaires.
Well, this is one thing that came up in the first meeting that we had, I believe, about the dress rehearsal. That was last year, year before last, the need for Spanish-language phones.
And actually, we have a large percentage of our census takers have been hired so far, even for the dress rehearsal, are Hispanic, or Latino.
And that'll be a plus also, because they would be more prone to answer the door, because they keep out lots, you know, cities there. So, if the Hispanic is the one answering, that's probably strong.
Okay, but if the questionnaire is not answered, or if somebody doesn't answer the door, they will be counted as zero. So, we encourage everybody to turn it in, and it's all Title 13, so it's not going to be shared with other agencies, the actual individual data that is on each form.
Any other questions? It's a good presentation. We appreciate it.
Sort of scary.
Yeah. We got to face reality, bud.
I have this many, south of 421. I can't figure out why we still don't have a Target store here.
That's an issue for another day.
What's that?
All right, moving on to the next item, new business funding for new telephone system for the clerk of court in courthouse. Mr. Grumman, you have about five minutes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Blakely could not be here today. She had a personal matter come up, and she had to go home. So, I told her I would take care of this item for her. The state is requiring us to put a new voice-over IP system, telephone system, at the courthouse. The cost of the system is $9,392.59. The clerk of court had budgeted $3,587 in capital outlay this year. So, the balance is $5,805.59 that would need to be used to make this changeover happen. Now, we're not buying the phones. We're basically wiring the courthouse so that phones can be used. The state is buying, furnishing the phones. We have to furnish the wiring. So, we have not tapped into our contingency fund this year. We have $100,000 in that, and it's my recommendation, and Ms. Minter's recommendation, that we use the $5,805 out of contingency to make this purchase, or do the construction.
Well, I don't see that we have any choice in the matter. We've got to do it.
No, sir, we're...
Go your most, man. Recommendation be approved. Motion made by Commissioner Pascal. Any further discussion?
Sorry.
So, this is another one of those unfunded state mandates that they legislated, Molly, and passed down to us, and we have no choice but to go with it, right?
Yep.
Yes, ma'am?
I saw some of that choice.
What's that?
You always have a choice. The consequences of what you don't want to deal with.
That's it.
We don't want to go see the Superior Court judge.
Either do it now, or do it by court order. Although in favor of the motions, they, aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Consider the renewal contract with Waste Management.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I've been in negotiations with Waste Management since October. I'm renewing this contract. Part of the issue with trying to get this renewed was, we didn't want to move too quickly where we would affect the city's bid for their solid waste services. So, we held on to our issues. So, before you is the contract. The renegotiated tipping fee will be $38.50, down from a rate of $40.28. We roughly spend $265,000 at the transfer station each year. Let the county know, another state mandate, $2 per ton disposal fee will go into effect July 1st. So, basically, we were almost able to negotiate the $2 fee being paid by them, not by us. So, almost a wash there.
What is the extra $2, let's call it?
Well, the state is wanting to clean up old landfills across the state, and enhance recycling services, provide extra grants. As you can see here, that after the state reimburses the solid waste companies for the landfills that failed, where they had spent, you know, millions of dollars trying to site landfills in the state, and the state is going to reimburse them for that, we'll start getting 37.5 cents of that $2 back to be used in our solid waste department for recycling services, and any cleaning up of old landfills we need to do.
Wait a minute now. MRR Southern told me that landfills that they would put on the river was not going to fail.
But we don't have one on the river, and I'm not sure that we have one that's failing, so...
I've never seen one that really... This falls into the category of similar to the uninsured motorists that we pay after insurance for.
The company has also offered us $125,000 to be used as we see fit, in exchange for taking out the provision that would allow us to buy the transfer station. It's been a provision in there for about 16 years. I don't ever see a s... I don't ever see us using the provision and buying their transfer station. It doesn't, when we first put it in there, actually, it was part of that negotiation back in nineteen ninety-one. It was the idea that we'd use that as leverage against them. It doesn't work so well now. I don't think any company would want to pay that kind of money for a fifteen, sixteen-year-old facility. They would probably want to build their own facility. And I did meet with the other waste companies to find out if there was any interest, and of course, there was interest. But the county would have to take a bigger role in solid waste operations and guarantee tonnages and basically subsidize their operations to get there up and running, and I didn't see us wanting to spend tax dollars doing that. So I feel we have a fair deal here for the county and recommending approval.
All right. Do I have a motion concerning this recommendation? To accept the hundred and twenty-five thousand? Well, that's part of that motion. I'll make the motion. All right, is there any further discussion? Although in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. So, order, and I would commend Mr. Crumpton for negotiating. I declare now the meeting in recess until the end of our program concerning the Centennial Plaque. I declare the board of commissioners back in session, open session, and we recognize Mr. Crumpton for the manager's report. I think the first item is a monthly financial report by Ms. Minner.
Yes, sir.
You have before you the financial report for the month of February. We continue to collect a good amount of taxes. I'll go down from the previous two, three months. Expenditures in most departments are running as expected or below, and a few departments that are above are the ones who continue to be above because of larger expenditures early on in the year. If I have to answer any questions you may have?
If anybody has any question of Ms. Minner?
So I think I ask this every time, and it doesn't sink in, but the, we spent seven point three million more than we've taken in.
No, you're actually in the black here today with the parentheses. Okay. In the year-to-date column, it's seven point three, it is. That's not in parentheses, so that expenditure is black.
Okay, that's the years of date. I was supposed to say that they all legit, that's in parentheses.
Okay, down the bottom, that's a good number. If that's in parentheses, that's good.
That's good. Okay. Try not to ask that again.
That's okay. I don't mind if I...
Obligated funds. Are these funds, are they spoken for or are they in parentheses?
No, it means that we're actually to the good. It means we're in a favorable situation as far as our budget goes, or revenues are exceeding our expenditures at this point. Now, that will balance itself on out during the year because you'll be spending those revenues to cover expenditures that are happening through the rest of the year. You have three or four months there where month to month that your revenue is actually exceeding expenditures. Outside of that, normally, if you have two or three months where you have your high revenues due to property taxes, other times your expenditures are going to exceed your revenues as they do for the individual one in February. So you will slowly see that number, that seven point three million number, remember that, as time goes by.
When will we see the five hundred thousand Medicaid start to come to us?
We were to receive a distribution today of eighty, ninety percent of what we would get of that five hundred thousand dollar guarantee. I have not had a chance to pull down the distribution and report to review the numbers. But our understanding was it was to be put into an account today. So I will try to have a report on that.
We're still projecting that, bouncing out of the hundred ninety-six thousand.
Yes, sir. Until I have a chance to review the numbers again.
So ninety thousand, five hundred thousand?
Hundred ninety-six thousand.
Hundred ninety-six thousand's what's really...
There's the real amount.
The discussion on the, we've had a lot of questions about the Medicaid number, and the legislature has advertised the five hundred thousand, that nobody will go below that five hundred thousand benefit. And what we're seeking clarification on, and we discussed this when we were in Washington with the association folks, is, you know, how are they going to guarantee that? And when we're one of those groups that are going to have to use part of that five hundred thousand to hold schools harmless on the ADM, is there going to be a makeup for us? And so far, the answer is maybe. So we're holding out hope that in the end, we'll have a makeup check from the state that the number was closer to five hundred thousand, but we're not banking on that money, nor are we banking on what's going to happen next year.
So when you take out the ADM money, it comes down, it draws it to about one ninety-six?
Now, there, it says in, the state staff has, legislative staff has said, no, that's not the way it's supposed to work. You're supposed to have the five hundred thousand, and we're going to wait to see if we get the check. Until we tell you we have it.
It's not working out that way right now.
Right now. But they say it's going to. So we're just being conservative and saying that we might get it. We hope we get it. They have a surplus. They should be able to hold us harmless. Just a quick note on the financials. We're somewhat concerned right now with the way our revenues are running outside of the sales tax and the added form taxes. We have a lot of permits, fees, miscellaneous revenue that are down that support programs, and that's typical when an economy turns, you have less people using your services. So we're watching them very closely in our budget preparation for next year. We're department heads are projecting expenditures and revenue for next year. We're having them go back and recalculate those revenues and giving us a realistic expectation. They obviously know what I'm after because if revenues aren't going to be enough, they're going to cut their expenditures before the end of the year, so we come in under budget. So we're watching it very closely. We have big concern about it right now.
I have one question. On the crono system, that's not going to convert all the employees to an hourly employee, is it?
It, we have, our temporary employees are true hourly employees, and you have exempt and non-exempt. There is a difference between the exempt and the non-exempt, and the timekeeping requirements based on law, so your labor standards are...
Okay.
That's probably what people are misunderstanding.
Non-exempt are basically formulated on a hourly rate, right?
All of our employees are paid an annual salary except for temps to work forty hours. Our non-exempt are paid an annual salary to work forty hours a week. Our exempt are paid an annual salary regardless of how many hours they work. They're expected to get their jobs done, whether it takes twenty hours, forty hours, or eighty hours in a week. So the system was showing regular hourly for our hourly, or non-exempts, that has been corrected to just say regular, and the temps will show temporary. So, but the only people who are truly paid per hour, who would only get paid for the hours' work without using vacation sick comp are the temps. It is a differential from what they're used to because we never kept up with their time, and there we are now.
But the money will be the same.
That is correct.
The other question, Ms. Minner? Is there none in motion that we approve her report? Although in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. All right, Mr. Crumpton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I have Joyce McGee with me today to help me with the employee opinion survey. I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. As you recall, when I started, I had a ninety-day plan, you know, to go out and meet all the employees and talk to them about issues and concerns and find out what was going on in the county. And after that ninety-day period was up, met with Joyce, and we decided to do a survey of the employees as a way to continue that feedback. And so I thought it would be good to share that survey with you because actually, I thought the results were pretty good. I thought that would be a good reflection on the board. But there are some issues that we're developing action plans for to address. Going through this quickly, the first sheet is the distribution of, you know, who was surveyed.
We had two hundred and forty-eight people taken the survey out of two hundred and eighty-eight, which is eighty-four percent participation. The sheriff's department decided not to take it at this time to discuss and include the sheriff's department. So eighty-four percent participation is really good. Our department heads and our people came together, and it was done really well. If you might, you might see administration looks a little high, but under administration, if you had less than four people in your department, four or less people in your department, then it was put under administration because they couldn't really survey unless you had at least five to get a good survey. So IT, HR, strategic services, and administration all came under administration. That was just something I thought I'd throw in there so you know why administration looks so large.
So from all the departments, the results were combined together so that we'd have an overall rating. Did not put the department results in here because then that would be more of a personnel matter. Any issues that came up within the department, we deemed as a personnel matter, and we'll be dealing with that. But like I said, overall, all the scores were really, really good except for employee relations. I think there was some, you know, as we learned, as I went around to each department, I think there was some concern about communications up and down the ladder, and especially communicating down to the employees why we were doing things a certain way or why we're implementing new policies. So the survey shows that.
If you look, it says benchmark, and that's what we're benchmarking out there in the industry. But we did beat the benchmark of other entities, but we're still not happy with it. I'll show you what we're going to do about that. But we did kind of beat the benchmark except for the ideas and suggestions, and we're working on that.
This is a good sheet here that shows commitment by our employees towards the organization. As we get further in, you'll find, you know, how people feel about their job and turnover. So there's a lot of loyalty towards the organization, and overall, they're very satisfied with what's going on. We'll keep going. Work group was just how they felt about working with each other, job satisfaction. You know, obviously, people have a pretty high opinion of their own work. So they think they're doing a good job, and they enjoy what they're doing. But on this particular sheet, the one issue that was very concerning is people feel that there's a lot of pressure in their job. And when you see a jailer come up here today, of course, she wasn't surveyed, but, you know, tax department, you know, things that they go through and some of the things we put our department heads through, obviously, they feel there's a lot of pressure on their jobs and dealing with the public. So I have the Employee Enhancement Committee working on ways to help employees deal with the stress, and hopefully, we'll have some programs coming up here in the next couple of months where they'll get to participate in stress relief activities. Would you like to participate, Karen? We're doing that. We'll call you over from the studio.
Car rate is at five.
I think after meeting with employees, one thing that they would like to see more is on-the-job training. I think they would like to see more training so that they can do a better job. So even though this, I felt that this score was kind of low here, I felt that that was a good sign that employees felt like they needed to improve and they needed the training to do it. So we're working on that in the budget to address those needs within the department. And of course, we get to the pay employee benefits. The highlight is that people like their benefits and understand what we're providing them. And I guess what's to be expected is people would like to make more money. So, but I think it's also important there on number three, I'm paid fairly for the work that I do, that we're pretty high above the benchmark for other companies and other entities. So probably not too bad. And then the turnover ratio there. You know, people saying that they're going to stay with the organization, and I think that's important. When you have higher turnover, you have high labor costs with training, and you actually have low customer satisfaction with the folks who are doing on-the-job training. So there's some more results. Can we move, let's move on down to the ten most positive responses.
Did you by chance have any of those job expectations where you experienced a little pressure? Did you have a question that would tie that into the training? Sometimes you feel pressure because you're not properly prepared to do it.
I don't think we actually had a question that would, that said that. But I think that that, I think that does tie that together, and that's why we're working on the training aspect.
Right.
Here are the top ten most positive responses, and I think the one thing that's important is when we survey employees, that first one is that employees are hoping that we take this survey and we use it to, for the betterment of the organization. So that's what we're trying to do as an organization right now. Got some good things there. And then the ten least positive, once again, you get that very, people feel they have the very high pressure from the job, and that employees are concerned about how we deal with job performance. And I think some of that comes from, you know, some employees aren't going to know how we're dealing with job performance. You know, if you're dealing with personnel matters and you're dealing with them correctly, they're a private matter, and employees aren't going to know that you've disciplined another employee. But I think there does need to be an understanding that, you know, we have high expectations, and when people don't achieve what we feel they're going to achieve, there's something we're going to do about it. So we're also reviewing right now how to evaluate our employees, and, you know, but hopefully have those changes in place for next fiscal year. Any questions?
Did the employees sign their...
No, sorry. It was confidential. No one put a name or anything. It was coded by department, coded by department and by supervisor, but there was no names added to anything. It was completely confidential. Supervisors were separated from the employee. We had the survey done by the Employment Security Commission. They came in and did the survey. We didn't even participate in the survey. We weren't in the room. They had the freedom to fill it out the way they wanted to.
You had this camera on, did you?
No, did not have the camera on. We made sure it was completely confidential.
How was it conducted, George Safari? Was it done over a few days?
Yes, sir. He was here for two days, I believe, and it was in individual meetings and not, it could be a whole group of people from different areas of the county.
Right.
We just had set times, people come in, and we'd pull the supervisors out and take them to a separate room. And I might would say that we did not have to pay for the survey. It was at no cost to the people. It was completely, no cost.
We don't know yet. They ain't got the meeting.
They'll figure out a way to charge.
Thank you, George, and thank you, Mr. Crumpton, for giving up your promises.
Well, we're trying, and, you know, it's part of the evaluation process and trying to do better. All right, I included in the agenda packets a copy of a draft of the brochure. We have not printed these en masse, but we have developed this in-house, once again, because it's free for us to do it in-house, and willing to take any comments or suggestions from the board. And I'll just make a comment, it's not the staff's intention to use any of the quarter cent sales tax for administrative capital projects. It's my belief that with what has been requested in the CIP, which this board has not voted on yet, that most of the money that would come from the quarter cent sales tax, if not all of it, would probably end up going towards education. So we have no delusions as an administrative group that we'll get any of this for... So we have no delusions as an administrative group that we'll get any of this for any of the needs that we have. Any of the needs that we address will address with existing revenues or savings from other facilities or from capital project funds we already have on hand. So just to make that clear.
Well, actually, as far as the capital improvement plan, we really cannot approve it until after we see whether the quarter cent goes, because that's included in your projections, right?
That's correct. And if we don't get the quarter cent sales tax, we really won't have a CIP plan. We'll have one, but we just won't have any funds to fund it. Within the plan, probably the only plan that would probably get funded next year or the project is the Sand Lee Dam restoration. The state is on us pretty good about getting going on that. We've accepted proposals from engineers. We're about ready to make recommendation to finance committee on an engineer for that project and we just have to move forward with that project. I don't see any choice in that. Other than that project, I see very little going on in capital improvements if the quarter cent does not pass.
Unless we increase property taxes.
Unless the board was willing to increase property taxes.
Does it allow it to?
I think it'll fix the dam over Sand Lee.
Well, that's why we're hiring an engineer is to determine that. We have had the, I've got to be careful because I'm on the TV. The inspector, I almost used a bad word in front of that, but the inspector for the state who inspects dams, she has given us some very good suggestions on how to handle, on how to handle and not spend as much money as we originally planned, such as dredging both lakes so we'd have greater capacity within the lake and then taking down the parapet wall. If you've been up there and you see the wall that's up there, that's their biggest concern is that parapet wall would hold water and if it were to fail, then you'd have a rush of water. They would rather see the parapet wall down and if it overflows, it just overflows at a, at a slow rate. And then the big price of the construction will be to handle the redo of the spillway. You know, it is cracking and falling apart and it's going to have to be repaired.
Do they put like a timber one in and then actually rebuild that?
Well, what they hope to do is actually lower the lake level so they don't have to, have to release the water as they're, as they're doing that. They've even talked about at one point, which we felt that would cost too much, is try to direct the spillway away, you know, to another area of the park. And, you know, because there's concern about the homes down, I think there are four or five homes downstream. So there, you know, was that concern. But she doesn't, the inspector does not seem to be as concerned as if you can manage the flow of the water better. So I thought she was very helpful. She was very helpful in the pre-bid with the discussions with the engineers and I think it hopefully will change the scope of the project greatly and we can, you know, do this with funds on hand. So we'll see.
You know, they know all hands, how much property do we own on the backside of that?
The total park is 165 acres. That was something that we discussed with the Sand Hills Conservancy because we did have it, have it looked at as far as taking some of the property and putting it into a conservation easement and getting paid for that conservation easement. But you then tie your park up for perpetuity as an easement for conservation. So in anything you would want to develop out there, you know, it would have to be in the conservation type mold. So if you ever wanted to take that backside and maybe put ball fields or something like that out there or even to just do hiking trails, you'd have to get approval from the Conservancy to do it. So we weren't, we wanted to do the engineering first, find out what they think it's going to cost to do it before we, before that option for putting it into land trust is, is really considered.
We already have a biking trail developed.
That's correct. But even if we wanted to widen the biking trail or lengthen it, we'd have to go to the Conservancy to do that. Any changes you made to that plan where the land, where you pledged that land, you'd have to get their approval. So not really ready to give up that control yet unless it, unless it's such a big price tag that we can't, we can't handle it.
Anything else?
Yes, sir. I have the Sand Hills Mental Health Quarterly Financial Statement for your review. It's provided quarterly. We put it in the agenda packet. CDVG update, it's been a long time since we discussed that last, but the, we did get one more extension on the project till June and I believe all the homes are under construction or close to it. And it's just absolutely amazing how fast this is moving along and I feel, I feel really good about it.
You feel pressure?
I, pressure is self-imposed.
Yeah, pressure. We had that for days.
Well, I don't feel as bad now that we got it extended beyond March 20th and I feel with this, with what Karen and the Boot and Company are doing, I feel very confident we'll get this thing closed out and I feel a lot better.
Let me ask you on this, Sand Hill report, there's a section there that talks about the statute requirement for the finance officer. That doesn't exclude having the LME present to explain these figures either, does it?
We can have them here.
I don't want to see that burden fall on the finance officer. That's what I'm saying. If she doesn't even become a mental health expert, I hope they're in for, and while she may, it may be in statute that she needs to report to us for the provided point of report, it doesn't exclude her having someone from the LME up here to explain those numbers.
If we want them here, I'm sure they would be glad to be here. Matter of fact, we're getting ready to get their budget, so I'll get time to have them here anyway.
And you want to make a motion that we have them here for the next meeting?
Well, I will, but what I'm explaining is, I don't think our finance person ought to become the mental health expert and their numbers. I think that that person ought to be coming from the LME. And while the statute's changed, it doesn't prohibit that from having the LME responsible for explaining those numbers for us. So if you want me, that's fine, I'll always have them.
You, can you do that, Mr. Crump?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor of having a representative here for the next meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, say no. So.
How would the contribution rates decide, or we're not, are some of these counties maybe, is it by population?
It's really by historical participation. When the LMEs were combined, whatever you were putting into mental health, you were expected to continue that participation. So that is what we have done.
So these counties that have a fifth of what we put in, they just afford this reorganization of the LMEs when they were, that's what they were contributing?
Yes, ma'am. And I will, I have spoken to the Association about that and Paul Meyer told me that the legislative staff is reviewing the participation of counties in mental health, which is never a good sign when the legislative staff starts looking into things. It's kind of like when they start looking into roads, next thing you know, there's a legislation involved where we can participate in road projects. So now they're looking into this and that makes me very nervous. Our participation is pretty good, plus we provide them a building. The problem with just providing them the building is we don't get credit for that expense of providing the building. We would be better off renting a building for them so we get that credit.
Robert called that right a year ago.
So they're looking at it, they're looking at it very hard. Obviously, with the problems mental health is having, they may look to the counties to help fix it and, you know, the Association is already vehemently opposing it. We just got Medicaid relief. We don't need to jump into a new program that, that, you know, takes that relief away.
They're looking for 40 million already and if the legislature doesn't put it up, you can count on the counties having given up. Where it's going.
Something I would like to see in these, you know, how much of this is substance abuse, how many, by cases, you know, so that.
They have that information.
That's why you don't want your finance director trying to do it. That's why the LME is supposed to provide that information. You don't have time to run those numbers. That's what they get paid for. But as long as they keep you in the dark, they don't have to explain anything. As long as they're not knowing. When we got into this deal, and I'll just make it very short quick, when I looked at what some of the other counties had, $55,000, $58,000, we're paying for that. We're paying for that. Anything we don't get goes there, we have to share in there. They'll tell you that it doesn't happen, but how can it not happen? It's the same thing the state's doing to us.
So they don't reevaluate that based on the number of cases or whatever they do per?
This was, this was strictly by what you were contributing.
And it's stayed that way all this time from its original?
And it has stayed as, and plus it, you know, it hasn't changed. I would say that the LME we're in is financially pretty sound, which probably is pretty sound because of that 2.3 million they're getting in county funds.
They report the revenue by county appropriations. I'd like to see the case management by counties also, you know, carry apples to apples here.
We had a chance to get in with Cumberland County, which is four times our size, five times our size. We'd have been like the $55,000 group in comparison.
And why didn't we?
Well, you had four members that felt like they knew more about it than mental health knew about. It's always a problem. And they didn't, and it's proven that they didn't.
So we're paying for it now.
You gonna pay more?
There's been a lot of discussion, you well were lately over in Raleigh, about this big change that was supposed to improve everything and it is not. Got a mess.
$400 million thrown away.
We need to reform the reform.
We're going to reform this.
Okay, any other questions?
Just got one on this quarter cent sales tax. We've got a meeting scheduled for the 24th.
Wait for the day.
To discuss what, and what's the purpose of the meeting? Because I'm wondering if it's talk about this, why don't we have the Community College and, and the EDC there?
Well, acted the Board of Education request to make it with us, and the Community College has not.
To, I don't care what they request, now we invite them.
Well, we can invite them.
Yeah. Well, that's the first step. They need to be.
That's the part of, that's the part of education that wait on that.
So I would certainly ask that we extend that invitation for them to participate, of the EDC and at the Community College.
See the agenda, I'm not going to leave here, but I just wonder, I mean, is this meeting a little premature? Just because I don't know. Sales tax didn't pass.
Well, I think, I think you want to.
Experience that.
I think they, they made the request to discuss their new programs that they are going to institute next year so the Board of Commissioners would know what they're doing. And then the second issue is they wanted to, what we wanted to discuss and get their support in helping sell this quarter cent sales tax since most of that revenue would go towards their projects. So.
Could go towards their projects.
I would think that way, but.
I see Mr. Williams here. Mr. Williams, is your, is the Board of Education all 100% for this sales tax resolution? And the sales tax?
I can speak for one vote. Sean Williams, I can't speak for the board. But we did initiate the conversation and meet with the board, discuss several different issues and I think there were about five or six that were sent to discuss and then y'all responded back.
Hey, any other questions? You got anything else, Mr. Crumpson?
No, sir.
All right, now Commissioner's comments, Mr. Pascal. Michelle?
In our concern agenda, there were some groups that had donated to our thanks program. I just wanted to publicly say thank you. The Arts Council, Willingham, Sand Lee really were united way, so they may not have gotten that, you know, since we put the consent agenda, so just to give them recognition.
I think we, we do, we send the record.
Yeah, I've got a prepared thing that I kind of wrote down to keep my thoughts together. This is some things I've been hearing from folks in my district. This is on the 22nd of 2007, January 22nd, 2007, this board passed a resolution to call the vice seclusion of codes in addition to one second increase in the sales tax to meet the capital needs of schools and CCCC. Now this board has backed away from the capital needs specifically for the high school and the classroom building and campus and Central College, Media College. And last we voted to approve reports of sales tax for any and all capital needs in this county. They were troubled on the 18th, we voted and revised the resolution specifically stripping any references to the renovation of the high school and classroom boom CCCC and a resolution that was different from the resolution in our packets. The removal of those projects from the resolution in our packets by the Finance Committee has taken by many as an indication that this board does not intend to fund those two projects and only giving back what I've been hearing. I've been asked by many in the community if this board truly supports the original request for the sales tax for the capital construction needs for education. And I personally cannot reassure them of that. I can only speak for myself, which I have said, I, I do. Renovation of the high school is overwhelmingly supported by those speaking on behalf of the quarter cent sales tax during the meetings that we had. And I just want to note, do we as a board owe the public qualified positions, our intentions, what we need to do with this money? I think it was brought up by Mr. Clark in a roundabout way. I think he's asking kind of the same things. Do we need to put something out there that says, yes, we will do this? Maybe in a, in the form of, you know, a budget, you know, attached to passing of the quarter cent. It's just a question I propose to, to this board. It doesn't, I haven't a ready answer as far as.
Well, I think this board acted upon the recommendation of the Finance Committee and anything different from the resolution that we approved would have to come through the Finance Committee. Is that correct, Mr. Reed?
That would have to be one way or the other.
Are there other ways?
There's always when you have four votes on the Board of Settlers. Well, it goes the same thing for Board of Education. I'm just telling you how it like it is. You ask a simple question, I'm giving you a straight answer.
And all I'm doing is trying to.
Well, I would imagine that if, if Chatham, I think it was Chatham just had, what, 836 jobs?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty, okay. Six ain't going to make a lot of difference. And then one other plant had 100 later on. I would imagine that they had that quarter cent sales tax, they'd rethink what they were going to do with it between now and the time that they have to make up the differences in the number of jobs they just lost. So for me to sit here and say that I would commit to anything this early in the game, it would be unreasonable in my mind for my vote.
Now, I would tell you that I expect a good portion of that money to be used for leasing here. Is it 25 million? I don't know. I don't know. Is it, you know, the way I look at this board is the way I look at a bank. You go to the bank and you ask for a loan, you have to justify your loan. And, you know, there's some questions that need to be answered over there at Lee Senior, and, you know, that's my perspective. I mean, I don't know that anybody has any more, you know, I've got two kids that will go to Lee Senior, so, you know, for me not to, I have a vested interest in getting it done, but I think as a county commissioner, you have to sit here and, we're the holders of the purse strings, and if we don't do our due diligence in any project, just, I mean, it's, you know, just to throw money at something doesn't always help the matter. I mean, with this presentation we just had, I mean, it smacks to me that it's all about capacity, and the plan that I've seen over there already talks about tearing down the Matt Building. Matt Building was built in 1970-something, and, you know, the only good reasons I heard were, is it gonna be a part of a greenway, had drainage issues, outside drainage issues. I'm sorry, dig a bit. Let's do something about those. Let's increase capacity over there. That's what that just smacked of to me.
I mean, so, correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't the height plan increase capacity?
It does.
But what is that number?
I'm not exactly sure the number is quibble, but I do know there is 100, 200-something for capacity.
And that's the amount that we had at Southern Lee too before, now it's at full capacity, right?
Not at full.
Well, the numbers today just said 1,300 and how many?
1,300.
1,382 or something like that, Mr. McCormick said, that was over and above the 1,200 that, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud here.
Well, there's, there's some issues that the two boards can address in their meetings.
I mean, and that's what we should do, as, but we, I think the public needs to understand that we are a board that holds the purse strings, and we need to do our due diligence.
And we have fiscal responsibility not to allow the county to get into financing the deal.
That's exactly right.
I do think it's important to note that, that resolution was supported 7-0. And with that vote, that's a strong message to the public that we, we support the efforts of everyone concerned so far as Lee County High School. I've been over there many times and looked at the different things over there, such as the auditorium, the gym, different areas of the school, had the many meetings over there. And the education, to me, is a huge priority, but I think that resolution's supposed for itself with the vote that we had.
I went up there and took a tour of Southern Lee High School, and that is the most impressive high school, and has the highest morale of the teachers over there that I've ever seen in my entire life. Teachers were absolutely happy, and it was just a, I just went in uninformed, and I had Assistant Principal take me on a complete tour of the school, and, you know, I was very proud of that school. And I understand Lee Senior is, you know, needs to be completely redone, but, you know, it goes through a process. We have to go through our process. So, you know...
David Twiggel, you have it, do you?
No.
Mr. Gill?
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Mr. Lamont?
Same, and also I'd like to thank John and the staff for doing up this information here so far as the Quartercent sales tax. I think it's a mighty good job done on it. Also, to all those that came and spoke at the, all the meetings that we've had so far as the concerns of the high school, I think they got their message across, and I certainly appreciate each and every one of them.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Reeves?
I got a couple of things. One, I wanted to ask County Manager, County Attorney, have heard any more water requests? Anything more about the water request?
I have been in discussions with the city. It's the city attorney's opinion that we, they need to have special legislation to be able to assess our residents, even if we contracted with them, so we're still working with the city on that, and I hope to have word back this week, what, what we're gonna do in the meantime, what their game plan is on that, so we can get Miss Rigsby her water.
I think, but not just for her, but for the future growth that we're getting.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, let's get it on the books and get it taken good as possible. The other part is that we're going to have to talk about these 911 funds very soon, but I would submit and suggest to the board that, all boards, first, we ought to try and get that money earmarked and down here before we start spending it.
I thought we did.
Well, there's, there are three different types of money we're talking about getting down here. One is the funds that are being transferred to the general fund. We already have those funds. We're just trying to get the final reconciliation on the exact amount. Then we have the funds that are left in the wireless fund, which now become our 911 fund under the new legislation that was enacted on January 1st. Then there are the future funds that are to be distributed by the 911 Board to us, and I think Mr. Reeves is probably alluding to those future funds, because the legislation says that the funds are only supposed to be used for a primary PSAP unless you have an agreed-upon backup. You can use funds for a backup, so we would have to create, our secondary PSAP at the Sheriff's Office would have to become a backup PSAP, and so we could use those funds. So the real hitch here is that we've operated this way with the city without a contract for all these years. The 911 Board has informed us that to continue getting funding, we will need a contract between us and the Board, but between City Council. So I guess we need to move towards getting a contract with City Council.
And I'm gonna recommend that we try and do that with board members and not just staff. I think that's what needs to be situated, so that we get off the dime, get on with collecting whatever we can collect out of the year, but not just leave it to staff members.
So are you just suggesting that, or you gonna motion?
I will so move. I'd be handling that now and volunteer myself as one member of the small committee.
Okay, will.
Or notify the city.
All right. Although, the thing with the motions, aye.
What, what's the motion?
To use board members instead of staff to decide work out...
Work out a contract.
Work out a contract.
All we've had is a gentleman's agreement in place ever since.
Don't you think it's appropriate for the county manager and the city manager to still do that and bring that to us? Sometimes you can have too many chiefs and not enough Indians in this decision-making stuff.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. I'm telling you what I know from experience and history going on right now with this whole matter, it is a matter that's going to eventually spill over into something that we don't need to be engaged in, and I think right now the elected officials ought to make the decision on how it's going to handle it, so I'll ask.
Well, it kind of takes the county manager off the spot, too. And there have been, or has been, a lot of discussion about this between the county manager and the city manager already, correct?
Yes, sir.
So Mr. Reeves' motion is that this board and the City Council get involved in the, in the discussions. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. I'll get with Mr. Reeves and we'll work it out.
All right.
Anything else?
I think that's it of the meeting.
Okay, Mr. Crumpton?
Nothing, Parker, sir.
Okay. I just have one thing. Our next meeting is scheduled for April the 7th, 9:00 AM, and I remind you that we have a public hearing this evening at 7:00 at the courthouse, and I need at least four of the members to be present, and I would like to know they are out there at the end of our hearing. Nothing else further to come to the board's attention, then I recess this meeting until 7:00 tonight.